All right, now. At this time, we'll take a moment for silence and then the pledge. And McKinley Spencer, our fourth grade student at Edwards, will be leading the pledge. So we'll take this time for silence right now. You want to do it here?
Yeah, stand there. Stand there. Boom.
At the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that, Ms. Spencer.
She's gonna waste no time, is she?
I'd like to call Chief Academic Officer Ms. Stubbs to present special recognitions.
Good evening. Last January, the curriculum team applied for the Strategic Compensation Grant. We submitted the grant for five schools based on the following criteria: retention rate, retention rate of teachers, critical needs geographical area, and poverty index. New Heights Middle School met the criteria of the grant as determined by the State Department. The district opted for the state collaboration approach. So this means the grant is based on the spring 2024 to 2025 student growth as measured by SC Ready. The awards require students to have assessment results on SC Ready for the prior and the current school year, so this is a fourth through eighth grade initiative. The teachers that meet the criteria are teachers in ELA and math. The State Department then looked at the growth of students and the stats, State Department along with the Education Analytics calculated the growth metrics and determined those teachers that are going to be awarded tonight. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McGuire, and he's going to let us know the names of the teachers, their subject, and the amount awarded.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board. At this time, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to recognize six of our very own math and ELA teachers at New Heights Middle School who have been recognized for this outstanding growth award for the 2024-25 school year. So we'll start with our math recipients. When I call your name, come on up to the podium, beginning with Ms. Raisel Grayelos. Ms. Grayelos teaches eighth grade math at our school, and she taught eighth grade math last year as well, and of course, that's where her students tested in for the spring. Ms. Grayelos, this year has been awarded $2,870. Next, we want to recognize Mr. Christian Alejandro. Mr. Alejandro teaches seventh grade mathematics, his students, he also taught seventh grade math last year as well, and that is what the results were for us from last spring. Mr. Alejandro has been awarded the amount of $6,480. And our last math recipient is Ms. Cinderella Lou. Ms. Lou teaches eighth grade math, as well as this year she took on a new topic of geometry, and last year she did teach all eighth grade math. So very pleased to announce tonight that Ms. Lou is awarded the amount of $11,480. We also want to recognize our ELA recipients, one who could not be here tonight, but we definitely want to recognize her. She's been on a leave of absence, but she will be returning tomorrow. We're very grateful to find that out. Ms. Myra Fisher, Ms. Fisher teaches sixth grade ELA, and she did teach that as well last year. She has been awarded the amount of $6,480. I want to recognize Ms. Kim Bonasiewicz. Ms. Bonasiewicz teaches eighth grade ELA at New Heights. She also teaches our honors English class as well as this year, as well as last year. So Ms. Bonasiewicz has been awarded the amount of $6,480. And last, but certainly not least, is Ms. Braver Spell. Ms. Spell teaches our seventh grade ELA. She's also our spelling bee representative, as well as our seventh grade hall leader, and we're very pleased to announce that Ms. Spell has been awarded $11,480.
Would all of y'all like to come up with these teachers and have your picture made? Congratulations, folks. Okay. Hopefully, that'll come around again at some point. Be nice. There is no public comment tonight, and I'd just like to welcome everyone here since we've done that, and big welcome to these ladies and gentlemen. SRO, Lee, you're not Lee. Brad. I've known him since he was a little boy. Jacqueline with the link, thank you. All the principals, staff, teachers, administrators, everyone that's come tonight, we appreciate it. Board members, you've been given the minutes for October the 13th prior to the meeting. If there's no objections, they will be approved by consent. Good? Okay. Now we'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Kasky, for our September financial review and presentation of the South Carolina Forestry Commission Revenue.
Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board, good evening. Prior to this evening, you all received a copy of the financial report for the month of September. You will notice that the format of this report is slightly different than what you've gotten in the past. The cover page and the revenue reports that you got were identical, but I split the expenditure report into two, a labor and a non-labor report. Both of those are going to be listed by location. That format's going to give you a clearer picture of kind of where we stand year-to-date. Those labor costs are going to be more consistent throughout the year, whereas that non-labor stuff is going to be more front-loaded, and since the old report combined those into one report, it made it impossible to really see if we were really on track in a given department, so that should make it a little clearer and also reduce the amount of utility reports that you have to sort through, so that you're right now just going to get a one-year-to-date report that is just for utilities across the board, and you'll still be able to track that, but it's just they're all grouped into one cost line per location. And those are just some preliminary changes that I believe made the report a little bit more usable and understandable, however, I do expect that once we start our monthly finance meetings, I'll get some suggestions for some additional improvements that we can make in the future. So are there any questions to the format or the contents of the September report?
Any questions? Okay.
All right. So each year, in accordance with South Carolina Code Section 48-23-260, 25% of the revenue generated by the South Carolina Forestry Commission on Sand Hill State Forest is designated to support Chesterfield County School District. Tonight, we have with us the Director of Sand Hill State Forest, Mr. Brian Davis. He's here this evening to present the 2025 State Forestry Commission funding.
I'll keep it short and sweet. I just appreciate the board, the school district, allowing us to be here tonight. Again, as Mr. Kasky said, this is, you know, in lieu of a property tax that the state forest doesn't pay, the money comes back mandated, 25% of our receipts come back to the school district, and we're just glad to be here tonight and thank you for allowing us to come. So if I could, put my glasses on. This is a, this year's check is $305,802.76.
I think Mr. Earl always comes for that presentation. All right, Ms. Stubbs, you want to come back? She's going to give us our curriculum report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board. Several items on the curriculum report that I would like to review with you. First of all, adult education. The Adult Education Department observed Cyber Security Awareness Month, and participants completed the North Star Cyber Security Module and the IBM Skills Build Cyber Security Fundamentals class. In addition, AI Fundamentals Workplace Literacy Program received approval from the SC Office of Career Readiness, and the program will be 12 hours and introduce participants to the development of AI. Want to also mention that, beginning with this school year, the 25-26 school year, first graders who are not demonstrating grade-level reading proficiency will be invited to summer reading camp in accordance with Act 114 of 2024. And so this legislation extends, expands the summer reading camp eligibility to include first graders, enabling us to identify students earlier and intervene for any struggling readers. There is below in the report, the scores that I Ready will be used to help us determine which students will be invited to summer reading camp. Of course, this is part of our goal, is that, you know, all of our students are on grade level and reading at their grade level by at least grade three. Dr. Candace Hoffman, along with one of our literacy coaches in the district, Polly Human, presented at the 25 South Carolina Association of Title I Administrators, and they had a presentation regarding intervention. The title was "Rising Up to Success: Utilizing Rise and Rise Up to Drive Data-Informed Growth and Student Engagement." Lots of things going on in the Fine Arts Program. Long Middle School has been recognized as the PSAE School of Excellence in Art Education. In addition, students from Sherawta Intermediate, Long Middle, Sherawta High School earned awards in the Sidewalk Child Competition during the Jazz Festival. The Spirit of Mackbee earned first place with Best Music in the Class 3A at the Sherawta Tribe Invitational. The Sherawta High School Jazz Messengers had the honor of opening the South Carolina Jazz Festival this year. The South Carolina Arts Commission awarded Mr. Lance Stockton a $2,500 grant for upgrades to the band. The Sherawta High School Marching Band competed at the Bands of America, Bands of America Carolina Regional, earning awards for high visual performance, high overall effect, and first place in Class 1A, and that's a remarkable achievement for those students. The Chesterfield High School Chorus recently performed at the SCMEA Region Choir, where Tana Adams was selected a soloist for the concert. Finally, the State Marching Band Championship held at November 1st at North Central High School. Want to point out that Sherawta High School placed sixth overall, and so that's the first time in more than 15 years that the band was in that, in that place. Dr. Hoffman and Dr. Bradley from the federal programs presented at our induction cohort. Ms. Mona Lofton also had a presentation on exceptional ed procedures. Our 11th grade students, junior scholars, traveled to USC Lancaster on October 23rd, and they were able to meet faculty members and participate in Mad City Money, so that is kind of a hands-on way for kids to understand how a budget works. So they have a career, and they have debt, and they have a salary, and so they have to navigate all of those expenses, like housing and transportation. And finally, we completed our last round of high school data meetings, and so schools are really working hard to identify students that are on track and off track for graduation, and so the curriculum and Special Ed Department departments are working closely with high school principals to make sure that all of that is on track with our students.
Any questions?
I have a couple. I'm going back to the first grade reading. Do we know now, percentage-wise, based on history, how many first graders we got coming in the school system that's struggling with their reading level?
So we have different ways to look at that. One thing that we have, we do, we do an I Ready, which is a reading assessment. We do that, you know, in the fall, and it kind of gives us a measure of which students are needing extra support. We are doing that again now as part of the winter assessment, so that'll give us even more data. And then we'll look closely at the spring to see where our kids fall, but you know, it's still, it's still early for first grade. There's a lot of growing that happens between now and January and February with first graders. So, so we do have, you know, students that still need a lot of support, but we also know that this is a, this is a time when they really start to take off and gain those reading skills that they need.
I guess my question is, is that the law came out to say third graders, so we had to be keeping track from first to second to third.
Right.
And just curious, so my second question is, out of the third graders that took the test this year, have we been able to, since the embargo now has been lifted, have we been... we been able to determine our third graders for this year who has not reached that reading level?
So, so do you mean the, the third graders that took it last year, how they're doing this year in the fourth grade?
Now, I want to know the percentage-wise that, that's not reading on third grade level. Do we know that yet?
So are you asking for the current third grader, sir?
No.
Or last year's third grader?
Um.
That should, I mean, as far as the percentage of last year's third graders that didn't meet benchmark?
Yeah, there's a fourth grader now.
That are fourth graders now?
Uh huh.
That data should be reflected in the state, state testing results, correct?
That's what I'm asking.
Because that should show your, your, what you're asking for is the percentage of students that were either proficient or advanced, correct?
I'm asking for the percentage of students that's not on third grade level, that's, that's a fourth grader.
So.
I know we had summer school for them to kind of catch up.
Okay, so you're wanting to identify those that we had summer school for?
Right, right.
And if, where they are at, that are current fourth graders?
I think what you're referring to is last year, what we found out that kids that weren't on a certain level were not going to be promoted, I think is the best way to put it. They were going to go to summer school. I guess you're wanting to kind of get a follow-up on that group?
Yeah, I kind of want to know where they are.
Okay, okay, okay. So we, we did look at that closely, and, and I don't know all the numbers right off the top of my head, to be honest, but I will say that overall, the majority of our students that went to summer school were not retained because they did meet that benchmark at the end of summer school. And so when I say meet that benchmark, there was a certain score on I Ready. Now, it, it may not be, you know, it still could be slightly below third grade, but they still made that benchmark to be promoted. We did retain a few students, but it was not many. And I will say that our third grade intervention, the third grade summer reading camp, was very successful in promoting those, those kids, and that they did make that benchmark. I can't remember the top, the number off the top of my head that we did retain, Mr. Sweeney, but I can find out.
Okay. The other last, last point of, of the question, whenever they don't reach that benchmark, are, are those kids relegated to special ed? Are they moved to special ed? They stay with the regular curriculum?
Yes, so, so if a child is continuously not making the benchmarks or struggling, then we put in some type of intervention, and so there has to be an intervention in place first, and so that, we will try different things with that child, and so the teachers drill down to what it is that student needs, you know, what is that skill that they're missing? And then, then there may be cases where then, from there, they do, they are maybe referred for special education.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll hear from our Chief of Student Services, Dr. King, about our discipline report.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so good evening, Dr. Ballinger, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I would like to go over the discipline data for the month of October. This data is an overview of discipline trends throughout the district and within our grade levels. So for high school, our top five infractions for October were, in this order, first through fifth, tardies was eighteen point three percent of infractions, truancy fifty-three point, I'm sorry, twelve point six percent of our infractions. Phones violations was eleven point six percent, and disrupting class was five point two percent, and ID violations was four point five percent. So totaling fifty-two point two percent of incidents reporting in power school. For middle school, first through five, the top five infractions were inappropriate behavior at twenty-five point nine percent, truancy at twenty-four point three percent, disrupting class at five point eight percent, refusal to obey or defiant at five point four percent, and inappropriate language at four point five percent. So at the elementary level, the top five would be inappropriate behavior at twenty-two point three percent, hit, kick, push at twenty point five percent, bus violations at thirteen point three percent, truancy at thirteen point three percent, and disrupting class at six percent. Our district-wide top five infractions for the month of October were number one, truancy at sixteen point eight percent, inappropriate behavior at fourteen point one percent, tardies at eight point eight percent, phone violations at six point two percent, and disrupting class at five point six percent, which totals fifty-one point five percent of incidents reported in power school district-wide. So with all of that being said, I'm going to sum it up for you. So what that means is the top five behaviors consistently account for nearly half of all incidents indicated, repeated patterns across the district, that's within the first three months of school. Also, attendance issues are rising. Truant incidents increased dramatically in October at sixteen point eight percent, highlighting the need for targeted attendance interventions. So we do have some behavioral shifts in the data as well. So inappropriate behavior remains a top concern, but it decreased slightly in October. Phone violations has declined, or have declined, suggesting some improvement in device management. Also, hit, kick, push dropped off of the top five in October, possibly reflecting effective interventions. So classroom management is still, you know, we still are working through classroom management processes. Disrupting class and tardy remain recurring concerns, though their rankings fluctuates from month to month. But as you can see with the district report for October, the discipline has decreased. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Any questions? Yes, sir. No, sir. Well, we send letters home after three consecutive absences, that's when you kind of, they come on the radar. Each school has truancy intervention teams, and so the reason why the numbers you see increase is because we have now been more effective in, as far as reporting or how the information is gathered, because the attendance clerks, we have went to monthly meetings with each one, make sure we are identifying these kids, and also we have, if it's not face-to-face, they also via Zoom. So we have four quarterly meetings, face-to-face, and in the other months, we have Zoom meetings with the attendance clerks of identifying these kids. And the goal is to make sure that, that the parents understand the importance of truancy and why it's important for kids to be in school, but once you get to three to five days, letters are going home to parents. Once it gets past ten, that's when you, that's when it goes to another level.
Remembering from past, it's like after ten, it becomes a reading.
It could.
Yeah. And I'm also saying from an academic perspective, and not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, it's just something that, how do you increase your treatment? Academic achievement, your kids, and then, how the student has been there, of course, learning, our students learn.
Absolutely.
By the time they get back in life, then, if that's a mixed amount of classroom activities and learning.
Yes, sir.
If you can ask the staff to go in here and test on that new information, that may or may not.
Yes, sir. And the thing that, with the challenges, some of the challenges that we have, especially at the elementary level and the middle school level, that's mainly on the parents and not so much the kids, because of course, the parents are responsible for getting them to school back and forth, but a lot of the schools now have been focusing on celebrating attendance, which is kind of gauging that, that peeking the interest of kids, making sure that they come to school, so we're rewarding them with attendance parties and different things like that. We're trying to be creative as far as, because the kids are, kids will help hold the parents accountable for getting them to school as well, so kind of increasing that, that is helping with the actual attendance piece. But I do understand, whenever they miss an instruction, of course, that puts them further behind. So the goal is to, to get them in school and to hold them accountable for being there.
And Dr. King, just off of policy, I think, if I remember correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but our policy allows five excused parents, or parent excuses. After that, then it is an unexcused absence.
That is correct. You get up to five for semester classes and ten for year-long classes.
Correct. After that, if we require a doctor's note, otherwise it would be an excused, unexcused absence that would be marked down. Now, I don't think the state really matters as far as when it comes to chronically, being chronically absent, whether it's an excused or unexcused, an absence is an absence.
That's correct. When it comes to seat time.
And then at the high school level, Dr. Chapman, you know, specifically to what you're talking about, if they're missing all that, at the high school level, they could be also missing that seat time, which could hamper that student from getting their high school diploma or meeting the criteria to, to receive credit for that, for that class that they may need for graduation. So there's some other things that we have to do to play into that, to make sure that, that we're getting those students involved, that when we do offer opportunities for them to come in and make up seat time or something of that nature, to try to work, work through that. But again, it comes through, it, it starts with the intervention. What we can do to help in, you know, making it to where, one, we, we need to make school where it's, students want to come to school to learn. And, and so, you know, that starts in the classroom, that starts in the building, you know, so, so we've got to create that environment there where they want to come in. And, but then just be, making sure that we are getting in contact and staying in contact with those parents and working through them through, through some things. And we do understand sometimes there are some extenuating circumstances that we do have to, to be cognizant of, but, but anyway, so just wanted to make sure, because I know we get those questions a lot of times concerning, what is an unexcused or an excused absence? And I know our policy outlines that.
Yes, sir.
But I do like the fact that we are looking at things, also often in community, and maybe even doing some support for parents.
Absolutely.
That's it, if you know that, the best question to have, you know, is, is.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you.
We'll leave shortly.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, at this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Ballinger for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to welcome everybody in attendance tonight and everybody joining us online. Thank you for your interest in Chesterfield County Schools. I would first like to thank the entire Chesterfield County community for supporting the school system with the passage of our bond referendum. This support shows your dedication to improving our school system. As we move forward with projects, there will be a webpage that's located on the district's website for you to follow up on the progress. Again, thank you for supporting the students and staff of Chesterfield County Schools. I also do want to say thank you to, you know, this was a team effort. I do want to say, give special notice to Ms. Gollidge for putting together a lot of our flyers and, and putting together a lot of our information that was sent out and getting them, thank you, sir, getting those sent to parents on a weekly basis and getting those posted and, and just working through all that. Again, to Dr. Hill for, there, there were some meetings that I couldn't attend, that she would attend, or if we had conflicts, that she would go to one and I would go to another, and, you know, and then I know there was some meetings that, well, we were here at a board meeting, and I know Mr. Evans was at, at another meeting over in Sherawta that night, and he, he spoke on behalf that, of the school system. So it was, it was a team effort, so everybody was out, was out, making sure that the public was educated on the, on the subject matter. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, and thank you to the, thanks to the community for supporting us and for supporting our children and our teachers. Also, I do want to recognize that tomorrow, our community will, comes together to honor and thank the brave men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces. You know, I do want to say your courage and sacrifice and dedication to protect the freedoms we enjoy every day, I want to say thank you for that. To all veterans, especially those who are family members, friends, and loved ones of our students and staff, we extend our deepest gratitude. Your service inspires us to lead with integrity, show kindness, and value the importance of giving back to others. And so tomorrow, on Veterans Day, we'll pause to remember the peace and opportunities we have, we have, are made possible by your commitment and sacrifice. Thank you for your service and for being heroes in our community and in our hearts. I also wanted to make note that tomorrow will be, interim reports will go out. Also, that schools will be closed November twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth for fall break, and then the next thing I want to do is talk about our state report card. That was released earlier this month, and so I think we can pull that up. Just kind of talk about that. So there's going to be kind of two stories here when you look at this state report card. One is showing that our teachers, our administrators, our students, they're doing what they're doing, they're, they're doing what it needs to be done, and so you're going to see that we're making some growth. Then also on some other slides, you're going to see that we're still, even though we've made some growth, we're still behind the state average on some things, but I think, you know, the, the moral of the story is that we're, we're moving forward, we're moving in a positive direction, and you see a lot of positive growth. As witnessed tonight with the six teachers that were down here, that's just at one school. And, and that's not to mention all the other teachers that, that have had a lot of growth throughout our county, and we do want to recognize that it's the work of a lot of teachers, and I want to say thank you for the dedication to that. And so you kind of will see those two stories. One, that still shows us we're a little lagging behind, but the other, that shows we're moving in the right direction. And so when we look at our elementary schools, you can see we have one, one school that's excellent, one school that's good, so that's Ruby Elementary School is excellent, Plainview Elementary School is good, then we have Jefferson, Edwards, Macbee, and Petersburg, they're average. We do have one below average, and that is Sherawta Intermediate School. And you can see the green arrows there, that means that they, even those schools, that they're moving in a positive direction there, so they, they saw some growth at those schools. When you look at the middle schools, all four middle schools are average, and as we recognize tonight, new, new heights went from unsatisfactory just last year to average. So they made, they jumped two levels, and so that just is, you know, bodes well for what our teachers are doing in that building and working with our students on a daily basis. And so to have all four of our schools be average, that is, that is moving in the right direction, and you can see that those arrows are still moving up, so that means we actually saw growth at Macbee and, and Sherawta, sorry, Chesterfield-Ruby as well. At the high schools, again, we see that we have Macbee High, Sherawta, and Chesterfield, those are all average. I also do want to make note that Sherawta moved from, moved up a level from, and I'm going to forget the category there, you may have to help me, Ms. Stubbs, it's a.
Below average.
Huh? Below average, thank you. So they moved from below average to average, and so they made, they made that jump, and so that, we're seeing that positive movement, and so I, again, we're moving in the right direction when it comes to what our scores and what's happening in our, in our schools with our students and in our classrooms. So you're going to kind of see two pieces of data here. This first sheet, when you look at these points, as, let me back up a slide, do you see the points where it says average of fifty-one to fifty-nine? So these slides, some of these slides are, are going to kind of show you the points that the schools gained, so this adds up to their total, that gets them to that fifty-six for Macbee or that fifty-five for Sherawta. And then I'll show you some other slides that shows percentages as far as when it comes to state averages. So here, when you look at academic achievement at our elementary schools, you can see that just almost at every school, we saw that upward movement as far as points gained from one year to the next. Some are gaining minimal points, some made some huge gains with some, some points that they gained in that category. Now, when you look at the academic achievement from the state level, you can see that as far as with the district, we had forty-seven point seven percent pass rate compared to sixty percent at the state level for the ELA, and then in math, you can see that we have a pass rate of twenty-five, twenty-five point four percent, and, and then forty-four point five percent at the, at the state average. End of course assessments with English Two and Algebra One, you can see as a district, fifty-eight percent to the state average, and then Algebra, Algebra is at thirty point nine to the fifty-one point six percent. So it shows even though we're moving in the positive direction, we still have some work to do, and, 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 you know, our staff know that, our faculty, you know, and, and we're all doing the work to move forward. And so as we move forward with this, we are going to be adjusting some things, doing, but that's, that's later on down the road. Again, when we look at preparing for success, you can see. for success, you can see the upward movement. Now, there's no data for twenty-four because they didn't do an assessment that year. That was a rewrite for the curriculum, so it was not assessed that year for elementary schools, so therefore there is no data. And again, when you look at preparing for success, you can see at the district level compared to the state level. And just wanted to, to kind of still show you that, yes, we, we do have some growth there and, and we're going to get there. Because I see the dedication in our faculty and I see the dedication from our administrators. And so, we're all moving in the same direction. And looking at our ML progress, again, the dashes mean that's basically too few to report because it may be that there's only one or two students. And so, they don't report that because then those students could become identified to the general public based upon how they score. So, they only score with a certain number of students. And you can see there at that bottom, that New Heights Middle School, we did see some growth in, in our multilingual. And then this is our state data comparing us to the rest of the state for ML progress. When you look at student progress, again, this is, you can, again, see that we're moving in that right direction. We'd like to see those arrows moving up. That means we're gaining more points to add to our total at the end. And now here, we have quite a few bars as, as far as bar graphs that look at different data. And, in reporting student progress. So, you can see here, we're actually, overall percentage of progress points earned, we were actually above the state average in this, in this section. Also, when it comes to, at our all students, we were above the state average. Our lowest performing twenty percent of students, we were above the state average. That means we're moving our lowest twenty percent students ahead of what the state average is. So, that means, that, that shows you that the growth there for us specifically in that area. So, there are some positives there when you look at how we're moving our lowest performing twenty percent compared to the rest of the state.
Dr. Chapman's got a question, sorry.
So, I'm going to have to refer to probably some experts sitting out there in the, in, in the public to kind of answer some specific questions as, as far as that is concerned. I have a volunteer back there, Ms. Dubs, Ms. Brew. Because I, you know, I'm still, and I'll be honest with you, I'm still learning what all goes into this. This is kind of just my first dive into accountability in South Carolina. And of course, any time you, you, you get exposed to any accountability system, it takes usually a year or two to fully understand it. And because it's always a moving target. So...
So, there's something called an added value target? And so, if we're looking at, at how that individual, that growth that they make from year to year, so that's part of it? It's just, it's just basically that student growth. But you can see it, there's, there's the added value target. And so, again, it's just broken down into how that student performs from, from one year to the next.
And so, is that one that follows them maybe from first grade, or well, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, you see that growth and they add that over time? Is that what you're, okay. So, school climate. Also, you can see that when it comes to our school climate, we're, we are getting positive reports at, at a lot of our schools, and, and we're gaining more points when it comes to the school climate. When you look at our state data, and I just pulled some from the teacher perspective, some from the student perspective. And when looking at that, overall, our district, we're right about state average when it comes to how many points we got compared to others. But then also, when it looks at teacher perceptions of instructional focus, slight dip there, but teacher perceptions of working conditions, you can see a slight increase compared to the state as far as when it comes to the points that were awarded for that section. I didn't, I see an error there, I didn't add a heading for that one. But then student, student perceptions of social physical environment, you can see that, that we get, we earn more points compared to the state average there. And then student perceptions of safety, again, that's relatively the same. So, academic achievement, this breaks down our high schools. You know, it, it is a little bit different story here for our high schools than it was for our elementary and middle. And some of the slides that I showed earlier also address this. So, that academic achievement, when I showed the state level slide, that, that was all district. So, that included the high schools. That was the, probably I think, the third or fourth slide when I got into the, the presentation. So, I did not duplicate those slides. But you can see that Sheraw High School with academic achievement made good growth there as far as the points earned. Then when you look at preparing for success at our high schools, again, you can see that Central and Sheraw saw, saw growth from the previous year.
Dr. Ballinger, back up to high school again, one more, back up one more. What could cause that big drop in Central High School?
So, there, there could be quite a few things that, that have caused some drops. And I would have to probably rely upon somebody kind of out in the, the gallery here to, again, help support that. Some of the things that I'm hearing is, one, we have lost some quality staff over there. I also hear that we, and it's not that the people we brought in are not quality, but it's also that we are also short-staffed in some areas when it comes to some of our classes over there. Anything else that I may be missing, Ms. Dubs?
I think that's the main reason, is, is the lack of teachers in those areas. We had to rely on those or, on the other ways of like elevators, something like that.
Yeah. And, and some of our classes right now, I think, are also, yeah, through those elevate programs. So, that's not always a teacher in front of them every single day. That is more of a remote class. And so, you, you have, you know, that, I don't feel you get what is needed out of it. So, that has put a, that has hampered us in some of those areas. So, when it comes to, again, I, I don't know as far as last year, how, how much we have seen in population growth at, at Central. Now, I will tell you that what we are starting to look at are classing, our, our class size numbers, our staffing ratios to see how we can equalize those throughout the district and to make sure that we're, we are able to, to recruit people to come into the area. And, and so, I don't know if it's, I, I cannot answer as far as, other than what we're seeing right now and coming up with solutions. One of the solutions that we're looking at, I haven't talked to anybody outside of probably Ms. Dubs and maybe a few other people on this, but instead of having, one thing that we can do as a district, instead of having semester-long algebra classes, we move those to year-long algebra classes. That way, we are, we're able to, to get the time in that it takes. A lot of times, sometimes you may need remediation to put, to go forth with that, to make sure that we're giving our students the best opportunity to be successful. And, and, and again, when are, we have to look at, we have to be strategic also. When are students taking that class? When are they testing? You know, that can play a lot into how successful they are on that assessment. So, there's a lot of different things that play into that when it comes to student success on, on reports. It's, and, and we are addressing those right now, and we do have a plan. I do know that according to the state, both Sheraw Intermediate and Central High School have to do a state remediation plan, which will be brought before the board next month because we have to have it to the state by December twenty-sixth or December thirtieth. So, at the end of the month, we have to have that to the state. And there are some things that we have to do from our side. And so, we will be having more conversation about that plan and what we plan to do moving forward to help address some of those things. The elevate program is used... Three. So, we do need to recruit more people coming in. And those are some things that we, that I see that we need as a district are, you know, there is a need for instructional coaches within our district. Yes, we have literacy coaches, we may have math coaches that the state is providing at two of our schools, but we don't have instructional coaches, people that are going in, that are team teaching with the person, to help them with classroom management, to help them with delivery of instruction, to help them with engagement of students. So, so there is some other needs that we, that we can do to help support our teachers in the classroom as well. And that can help draw some others in. But we do need to continue to recruit our local to help us move forward. ML progress, you can see at both Macbee and Central High School, we did make progress with our ML students there. Graduation rate, as far as percentages, or points, sorry, points, you can see that Central and Sheraw did increase their points from one year to the next. Now, this is a state comparison, and you can see that overall as a district, our graduation rate as a district is seventy-seven point six compared to the state eighty-five point four. I know through the process of, of interviewing for this position, that was one of the board's areas of concern, is to make sure that we get our graduation rate up. And so, that is something that, that we are looking at and, and, and addressing. College and career ready, you can see again that Central and Sheraw both increased as far as when it comes to our points that they received for college and career ready. Looking at the state trends, you can see that we are on average for students that are college or career ready. Now, when you look at students that are college and career ready, we're at nineteen point seven percent to the state's thirty-one point two. When you look at students who are graduation, who are college ready, we're at twenty point four and then at thirty-three percent. But when you look at students that are in the cohort that are career ready, we actually beat the state average at seventy-four point seven percent to the seventy-three point three percent for the state. So, you know, we do have some areas to work on, on the college side. And, and of course, there's still a lot of work that we need to do on our career side to, to enhance other programs to, to make sure that our students are career ready as well. Again, high school success, we didn't see much movement there, actually decline in, on all of those. Climate report card, we did see an increase as far as points that Chesterfield High School received towards their overall rating there. And then just an overall CCSD overall scores, when you look at it, we had one excellent, one good. Then you see all those in the middle. And then we have CIS that is below average and Central that is unsatisfactory. But you also see those green arrows with, with positive movement going up. Again, as I mentioned earlier, CIS and Central, we will be coming back to you guys next month to kind of discuss what our plan is to move forward with both of those schools. So, that is my report for the night, and we'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Tonight, we'd like to welcome Dr. Vaughn, who is our new human resource director. She will give us our personnel exhibits.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Ballinger. Prior to this evening, you receive a, receive personnel exhibits for review. I recommend for your approval, Exhibits A through G.
I need a motion to accept.
So.
All those in favor? Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. All right, Dr. King, you coming back?
Yes, ma'am.
Policy updates and revisions.
Yes, ma'am. So, woman, you have already been given a copy of policy GCD. At this time, I would like to recommend it be presented for second reading and approval.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second, okay. All those in favor? Thank you.
All right. And lastly, I would like to present the following policy revision for the recommended first reading policy KBE parent organizations. This update allows the district to obtain a name-based criminal record history check for background investigation bureau on all financial officers upon receipt of a parent organization registration.
Need a motion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
That's all?
That's it?
You usually have an arm loop. All right. Now, Ms. Dubs, welcome back. You're going to present our overnight student travel.
Yes. So, moving forward, just for everybody to know, we'll, we'll do this a little differently next year. We'll have our fall field trips presented to you in September and then the spring in February. So, we'll just do that twice a year. But for right now, we would like for, to have your approval for a field trip for students from Central, Sheraw and Sheraw to attend the National Agricultural Communications Competition in Nashville, Tennessee from December tenth through December twelfth.
Need a motion?
So move.
All those in favor?
All right. We would like your approval to, for a field trip for students from Chesterfield High School to attend Green Hand Camp in Cherry Grove Beach from February nineteenth to February twenty-first to develop leadership skills.
Ms. Dubs, just keep reading.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then we'll take one.
Okay. Review and approve a field trip for students from Long Middle School, New Heights Middle School, Chesterfield-Ruby Middle, Macbee Middle, to attend the Junior Beta Club Convention in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina from January twentieth through the January twenty-third of twenty-twenty-six. And finally, to review and approve a field trip for seventh and eighth grade students from Macbee High School to attend the Garden City Chapel and Retreat in Garden City, South Carolina from November eleventh through November sixteenth. And that is the Fellowship of Christian Athletes Group.
That's all?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion to accept this overnight travel. All those in favor? I hope you have a good time.
Yes. For this part of the... So, so... Right, right, right. So, what they have to do, what they already do is they present, for any of these trips that are overnight, they have to do a detailed, you know, itinerary of what's going on, the, the chaperones, where the students are going. And that is submitted to the, to the proper person, whether it be Ms. Sowell, Dr. King, Ms. Ellerby. And then it is, that it's approved initially, but then they have to turn in a list of students and all of the, the documentation. And then from there, then I take those field trips and kind of narrow it down so that you just know kind of the, the basics. So, that's, that's kind of what we're doing, so that you know where the students will be going, where they're going, you know, the, the number of students approximately, or which schools are impacted by the field trip.
I don't know if it's, and, and sorry for the interruption, Ms. Dubs. I don't, I don't know if it's extra work. I think it's necessary work because we have to make sure that they've done their due diligence to ensure that we have the correct amount of chaperones, that, you know, they're taking into consideration where they're staying, how they're going to get there, instead of just trying to say, we want to go do this, and then, you know, it all falls apart. Because we want to make sure that when, when we do send our students out there, that's when we, we have more liability on us as a school system because they're not coming back to home that night. So, we need to do our due diligence to make sure. So, I don't, I don't know if our process is, you know, labor-intensive. It, it may be at that, but it is a necessary labor that we should do. It may be at that, but it is a necessary labor that we should do to ensure the safety of our students.
And so again, definitely not complaining, I think, what we're doing. And then you tell me about all those steps, making sure that it's fair and that's the stuff. You guys really, making sure that students and the whole body are safe. And the management officers, school them, and certainly, if it's not making more time consuming or challenging, I'm very good, like, we just don't think it's great, I'd like to work easier with school.
And, you know, for, most of our schools go on day trips, so they don't have to go through this process. But for the overnight trips, it is, you know, there is a lot involved, you know, with knowing where the students are gonna be, who the chaperones are and all of that. So there is a lot of upfront work, but I think it's worth it, you know, to have that, those safety protocols in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs. All right, now I call our Chief Federal Programs Director, Dr. Huffman, to present the District Parent Involvement Plan.
All right, Madam Chair, Dr. Ballinger, members of the board. Each district and school that receives Title I Part A funds or services must develop jointly with, agree upon, and distribute to the parents of participating children written parent and family engagement policies that contain information that is required by the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. This plan is to be approved annually by the local school board. Tonight, I have given you a copy of our parent involvement policy for your approval.
All right, I need a motion for approval.
So can I motion?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
All right, it's my turn. Board members, we have two new committees, Finance and Building, or Facilities. And I'm just gonna start by assigning two to Finance. Mr. Sweeney has asked to be on Finance, and Eric Kuhn. And then for Facilities, Ms. Blackwell, Scott Sims, and I'll be on there too. So within a few months, if you find that you can't, or if anyone else, as long as we keep it not as a quorum on the committee, if someone else wants to be on something else, let us know, or we may switch up in six to eight months and let you have a turn. Any questions? Good, all right. Okay, December the sixth through the seventh is SCASBA Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston. You know who's going. December eighth, we're having a board meeting at Town Metal Learning Center, which is at 5:30. That's our regular board meeting. December fifteenth, we are having a superintendent and the school board retreat at the district office at 5:30. And then February the nineteenth through the twenty-second is SCASBA Annual Convention at Myrtle Beach. Registration is open right now, if any of you all want to go. Room blocks will be opening soon, so let Becky know about that one. Anything else? I will report that, I got a report here that there is some snow falling in Patlin and Jefferson.
Is that right?
I doubt there'll be much, but anyway, if that's it, I need a motion. All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All right, everybody. We are now adjourned. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate your attendance.